I had to read this like three times, I didn't know.
Yeah, there was a-
So many acronyms, I was like-
I was telling Kelly, I was like, the V E and the C A Z and she's like, do you understand what any of that means?
I was like, stem wall, like stem wall, why is it called a stem wall? I need to know who thought of this.
I know, I know a lot of this only because of personally.
You have, yeah, you have to build stem wall?
I wanted to do stem wall, but-
They told you no.
I had to go with pilings.
Oh, okay.
And ask me how, see if that pilot has to go.
I'm gonna guess thirty.
Yeah, thirty five.
My parents had to have their house pinned because it started to sink on like sand because their home was built up on sand. And these pilings pinned the house had to go down seventy feet. We don't want to know what that cost.
I hear you.
It's not going anywhere now.
Yeah.
Go forever.
It's like when I did Hurricane Winter, I should have all of everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, right? And so, I would joke, I'm like, yep, I'm gonna leave the house, I'm gonna come back and everything's gonna be gone, but all the glass is gonna be in place.
There'll be a pile of windows.
The house will be flooded with the windows shut.
That's it.
So it looks like your house is in the red.
Oh yeah, I'm in the red.
You're underwater.
You're one of those three hundred and seventeen houses.
You're in the red, he says you're in the red.
Yeah.
We learned that after Edda. I remember those videos from the side of your house. And fish in the pool.
Mikes are hot. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Monday, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, uh, city council work session uh, on land development code flood amendments, uh, to order. The first two items on the agenda are invocation and our pledge of allegiance, and I've asked council member Soraki to lead us now, please rise.
Dear Lord, please guide the mayor and city council as we review the flood ordinance and the Florida building code technical amendments pertaining to the floodplain management. Guide us so that we can make the right decisions for the future of our city, and we thank you for everything you do for us. With this, we pray, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Thank you, councilman.
You're welcome.
I, I, I put him on the spot at the last minute because I, I didn't realize, I had forgotten that our city attorney was not able to be here today, and he normally does that. So I think that was good, good blessing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, the next item on the agenda is the citizens' open forum, and I'm gonna go ahead and open that now, is there anybody on this side of the room who wishes to make any public comments? Is there anybody on this side of the room who wishes to make any public comments? At this time, I'll go ahead and close the citizens' open forum. And move into discussion, item number one, development amendments to the land development code for flood-related matters. Uh, when we get into this, we're gonna have a presentation, I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager who can kind of get us going, introducing who, uh, the presentation. Um, and there's gonna be, just a reminder, we, we don't take an actual vote, as you know, uh, because we're in a work session, what we will do, and this is kind of a unique path that we're going with these, uh, this, these ordinances and this, this report, only because of the time, uh, restraints that we're under. So, we'll go through it, uh, we'll, we'll look to do things by consensus. Um, and then it will ultimately be staff's job to move forward with that consensus, and move it on to the, uh, planning board and bring it back to us and all that good stuff. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Albreth.
Mayor, as several of you have mentioned, it's fairly self-explanatory in that we're evaluating what will likely be amendments to our current flood ordinance. Some of them are legally required, a few of them have the opportunity for you guys to go a little more particular way or another via consensus, as the mayor mentioned. Our planning and redevelopment director, Tatiana Childress, has a presentation for you, and she's very nervous, so be nice. But it's pretty straightforward, and she's very well-prepared, and I can tell you, personal experience, being a finance guy, I saw the staff report before you guys got it. I learned more in this than I knew about the whole subject, she did a fabulous job of researching it to make us all smarter, which is the purpose of this. Obviously, the goal is to let the benefit of your decisions work for the community as we get to the part where the FEMA regulations are gonna be in place, which is August twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Tatiana, you ready?
Alright.
Do you want to introduce Elena, once it's easier?
Oh, sure. Good afternoon, councilmembers, mayor, so we have a new planner, um, her name is Elena Delgado. Um, wanna stand up? And we're very grateful to have her as part of our staff, so she, um, she's very experienced in drafting some ordinances as we're ruling, uh, moving into, um, the downtown redevelopment, I think she'll be a great essence for the commu- for the city of Oldsmar.
Excellent, well, welcome aboard. Hey, I, before you get started, I should have said this and I forgot, we are practicing the CDC guidelines. Excuse me, we're, we do not have our mask on up here because we're spread out. And since we do not really have but a few people in the chamber, everybody is already spread out, and so I think it's okay. If you, uh, don't want to wear your mask because you don't have anybody that's even eight feet next to you, it looks like, uh, that we will leave to you. There you go, the show is yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Tatiana Childress, planning and redevelopment director, um, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present today. So this is the city of Oldsmar flood ordinance updates due to new FEMA maps. Just a quick overview, the city of Oldsmar joined the NFIP in nineteen seventy-one as a participating community. Participating, participating communities agree to Title forty-four of the Code of Federal Regulations, which specifies minimum requirements for structures protection under the NFIP. Um, anytime when FEMA updates maps, uh, participating communities must either show the NFIP compliance or, um, ordinance update. Those communities that, um, do more than minimum requirement, um, are being rewarded by FEMA, in a way. There is an established, uh, community rating system, currently, city of Oldsmar is class six with about, with, uh, roughly two thousand, um, verified points. During our last verification cycle was within two thousand nineteen, no, two thousand eighteen, FEMA verified roughly twenty-one forty-nine, um, points, CRS points. So prior to firm updates, FEMA initiates flood studies that could take up to several years. Um, this graphic here demonstrate that six months prior to the date of the effective firm, a community receives a letter of final determination, LFD. The city received the letter of final determination on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, and participating municipalities, um, have six months to adopt new maps or demonstrate evidence of NFIP, NFIP compliance based on those, um, new, based on new firm data. The last flood ordinance was ordinance twenty fifteen dash sixteen, it was updated on May third, was adopted on May third, twenty sixteen. A representative from the Florida Department of Inver- Emergency Management initiates ordinance review for compliance. So we've been contacted, um, prior, actually even prior to receiving the LFD letter of final determination, we've been contacted by, um, DEM representative and, um, we've been advised that there are several, um, several items on the current ordinance that needed to be updated. Uh, not adopting two new standards could revert the city to a class ten rating in the CRS, or the entire community can be placed on a probation.
We don't want to be on probation.
No.
That just sounds bad.
Sounds very bad.
Right.
And I like the discount.
The next slide includes proposed amendments, and I'm just gonna read these, and then we're gonna go into more detail on each slide. And as I go through, like, more detailed on each slide, I would like some kind of questions from the council members. So the first is the limitation of accessory structures to six hundred square feet. Um, this is a new requirement by NFIP. The second one is one photo free board for manufactured homes to meet the class eight prerequisite, CRS prerequisite. Include previously, and the third amendment is to include previously adopted amendments to Florida building code in section six of the city of Oldsmar code of ordinances. The fourth one is to modify enclosures below DFE of elevated dwellings. And here we have several options, so remove the two ninety-nine square foot enclosure limitation below the elevated residential buildings, allow breakaway walls within the VE and coastal A zones, and require declaration of land restrictions of enclosed, um, areas below DFE. Apply VE standards to coastal A zone per Florida building code plus no backfilled stem wall in coastal A zone. So the first one is the limitation of accessory structures. FEMA policy one oh four zero zero eight zero three limits the size of detached accessory structures in zone AE to six hundred square feet. They actually don't specify the exact, um, size of that structure, they, they just state that it should be a size of a one-story, um, two-car garages. And in VE, that's a hundred square foot limitation. Accessory structures, um, can only be used for parking and limited storage, and they must be wet flood-proofed and include flood openings or flood vents to protect the structure from hydrostatic pressure. As shown on this picture, this is a picture of a flood vent, so when the flood, when the water reaches a certain flood level, the vent opens and the water just freely flows into that structure, not causing the hydrostatic pressure on that structure and protecting it. Obviously, the contents of that structure, they will be all ruined or flood damaged. Um, however, the structure will remain, supposed to remain intact, you're required to have one, one of those flood vents for every two hundred square feet of enclosed area for anything below the BFE. The next picture just shows kind of like the overview, so this is taken directly from FEMA. You can see that there's an accessory structure, so the area below the BFE has to be made out of the materials that are flood, made of the flood-resistant materials, these are your flood openings here. Um, they have to be installed at least one foot above the adjacent grade. See if we're missing anything else, oh, and the structure, the accessory structure has also meet, meet the definitions of a structure in FEMA terms, which means that if you at least have two walls and attached roof, that's your structure. So if you have a pavilion, for instance, with poles, then it's not a structure.
Let me, let me ask you a question.
If you have any questions, so yes, so we can pause here and I can take some questions if you have. So this is again, just wanted to remind, this is a policy initiated by FEMA for, to reduce the, um, accessory structure to six hundred square feet, so if we don't comply, we could be placed on probation, probation.
They're making this a pretty easy one to come to a consensus on, I suspect, for all of us. I did have a question though, would carports be impacted by this? I would assume not, since it's no walls.
So if a carport has two vertical walls, um, then it will be considered, um, a structure, but if the walls are open, then technically not.
But we don't allow carports anyhow, so it doesn't matter. It was a trick question, alright, I'm gonna come back to number one, so, uh, anybody have any questions on this item?
I just wanted to be certain that I asked this for each of these, but this is only going forward in the future, or if there's a modification to a home, is that correct?
Um, this is basically for us when we adopt maps in, um, August of twenty twenty-one, so this, this is moving forward, yes.
So the people, folks wouldn't have to like literally move out their existing structure in their backyard.
No, so those will be, I hate to use the term grandfathered in, but yes, they, uh, if the hurricane comes through and their structure is demolished, I mean, is, is destroyed, then they can't rebuild the same structure, so it will have to be, um, either elevated or have those flood vents and be limited to six hundred square feet only.
Understood, thank you.
And so that, just for the benefit of the rest of the stuff we're gonna go over, I would assume that applies, uh, to everything that we're discussing. Meaning, anything that we pass in the future, it's not something that would, of course, would be retroactive, going back. Certainly, if somebody loses substantially all or the value of their home, I think it's probably like a fifty percent rule type thing, then it's applicable. It also would, I would assume the fifty percent rule would also apply, that if you're improving what you have right now by more than fifty percent of the original value, then the new codes would require, uh, to be adapted, is that correct?
So the fifty percent rule would apply to your current, um, pri- primary structure, these are accessory structures, um, unless you insure those, that's when the insurance and fifty percent will come in place. If not, then you will just be, you will not be able basically to rebuild, if hurricane comes through and you had an eight hundred square foot accessory structure, and it's destroyed, be unrepaired, it will have to be placed back as a six hundred square foot structure.
That makes sense, that makes sense. Alright, anybody else got any question?
One, one quick question, please explain, why is it limited, why did it go down to six hundred? I mean, am I missing something? Is there a reason for that?
Uh, yes, so basically to prevent, um, converting some of those structures to livable space, and also, um, trying to just minimize the footprint, from what I understand, um-
Perfect, that, that, you explained it perfectly.
Yeah, FEMA, FEMA wants to mitigate part of the risk and say, this is as much risk as we'll take on.
I understand, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Alright, so I, I'm just gonna say, do we have a consensus to approve, uh, item one? Go ahead, very good, thank you.
Thank you, so we have, the next item is the-
See how good your presentation's going, just like that?
You're doing great.
You're doing great.
Thank you. So the next amendment is the free board requirement for manufacturing homes. CRS has minimum prerequisite for CRS class eight. So FEMA established the set of CRS requirements for class eight, and one photo free board is being one of them. This requirement includes one photo free board for manufactured homes located within the special flood hazard area. Um, in FEMA terms, free board is an additional amount of height above the base flood elevation used as a factor of safety in determining the level at which a structure's lowest floor must be elevated or flood-proofed to be in accordance with the state and community floodplain management regulations. Free board actually came from, it's a nautical term, and you see this picture of the boat, so it's actually the difference between the sea level and the deck that's referred to as the free board, um, in the, on the sea. In FEMA terms, however, so the free board is measured differently for coastal A zone and for V zones. So the free board is the distance between the base flood elevation and your first livable space or first, um, uh, floor of the livable space. It is measured different in coastal A or in A zones, the free board is measured between the BFE and the top of the lowest floor. So this is your lowest member and this is your, um, base flood, so you have, the free board is measured here. In the V zone, it's more, uh, it's, is more restrictive, so free board is measured between the BFE and the bottom of the lowest horizontal structure. And that's important to note as we move forward with the coastal A, because since, um, Florida building code treats coastal A as V, so that's how the free board is going to be measured in any of the coastal A areas as well, so it's gonna be measured to the lowest horizontal member of your house, not the finished floors you walk in. This is just a graphic since this particular requirement is for manufacturing homes. We only have one established manufacturing home community, which is Galera. Uh, where currently, even per Florida building code, you're allowed to have the existing structure to be three feet above the grade. Not above BFE, but above the finished grade. So not, that requirement is going away with this class eight prerequisite, so now that if you're, um, in a Galera resident and you wanted to rebuild your house, you will have to elevate it, um, at least one foot above that BFE. It's a good thing for Galera Village, if you look at their map, they're not that low, they're not as low as our shore area. They're already at elevation ten, and their BFE is about eleven, so one photo free board is gonna be maybe twelve. Before, if they were at elevation ten, they would have to elevate the structure to thirteen. So they're actually, it's beneficial for them, and, um, they're not gonna hurt as a community because of this new amendment. However, outside of the flood zone, I don't have a graphic here to show, but some of these manufacturing homes, they could be elevated up to BFE plus one on shore, if you want to put a manufacturing home on shore where the BFE is six, I mean, where the finished ground is six, and the BFE is gonna be fourteen, so your manufacturing homes will have to be elevated to, on stilts or something else, so. This is just, um, an informational slide, it shows you how that free board, since we kind of like covered the free board, affects your flood insurance rate. One foot, um, of free board, which is what we have normally in Florida, will give you twenty-five percent discount. Two, uh, two feet, that will be fifty percent, um, and so on, so, um, as you can see, the more free board you get, the lower your flood insurance, so it could be between four hundred dollars a year if you're four feet above, all the way to eight thousand if you're three feet below, um.
We're on two.
So we're on two.
Okay, questions?
Do we know how many, or if there are any manufactured homes on Shore Drive or in any-
There's one that I'm aware of, I don't know that it's completely, like, I guess it would qualify as pre-manufactured? Yeah, where they, they brought in, it was essentially pre-made, it's a beautiful home, it's huge.
Yeah.
You know?
I just, because there's no foundation of it.
More like a modular home, but it's considered pre-manufactured.
I know there is one on Bayview, it's not exactly on shore, um, kind of like Bayview and, and, um, Sint Pete Drive. It's kind of like narrow.
It was just, I was wondering, we wouldn't have, I don't think we have any restrictions as to putting them on Shore Drive, but in light of the fact with the sea levels that are rising and the flood costs that are gonna be there, if that would be something we consider, I was just going through that in my head as, as we were talking about it.
You know, it's, to your, to your, along that lines, there's a practical side to this as well, right? Like, you're gonna put a, a, a pre-manufactured home that's not gonna be way up, it just starts to become, it's not, it's not practical. So some of this, by virtue of, you know, the economics of somebody going and doing it, you know, it is what it is.
Sure, yeah, and I was just wondering if, if we had gone down and seen, I, I think I had seen one as well, but that was it, that was my only question.
And that would have to meet the Florida building code for wind load, and if you put them too high, so it's not just a flood that will have to be, they will have to be compliant with other options as well, so, yeah.
Gotcha.
Good point. Any other questions? Katie?
Just to be, thank you, mayor, just to be clear, this particular, um, recommendation is from CRS and the National Flood Insurance Program, not necessarily a FEMA policy.
True, yes, good enough, so this is not an NFIP, uh, but will not be put on probation if we don't, um, comply, but will be revert, will, will be placed to class nine if we don't, um, introduce this, so we'll be placed on class nine.
I don't wanna be in class nine.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You know, and we already have the one foot there now.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's not, I did have a question, and I've never asked this, but if I'm building a home and I select, and I, I elect to build it to much higher standards, I say I want, you know, three, um, free boards, do I reap the benefit individually?
Yes.
Okay, so even if we're making these, uh, you know, a little bit stricter, that benefits everyone, uh, an individual could elect to say, well, listen, I wanna get up to sixty-seven percent and go up four feet. I don't know that our code would allow, well, I guess we can now with the, depends where-
As long as they meet the Florida building code for, for wind and for accessibility and all the other stuff.
And some of this for us becomes such a, a crazy balancing act, because you take, you know, somebody who's been living there for a while, somebody buys a house, they elect to tear it down, and now all of a sudden, they have to go way up, and some of our people have been upset about, well, jeez, you're approving these homes that are monsters next to mine, and you're like, it's, it's FEMA, you know, it's kind of one of those things, so, in any of that, it's just, that's a good reason for us not to go all these extra free boards, you know, in my opinion. Anyhow, alright, do we have a consensus on number two to move forward with? Let's see, there's a consensus, alright, thank you.
Thank you. So this slide will cover the previously adopted Florida building code amendments. Um, in section four, five, and six of ordinance twenty fifteen dash sixteen, on pages forty-seven and fifty-five, you should have a copy of that ordinance, by the way, in case you, yes. Um, so those pages were omitted from the municipal code somehow. Staff is proposing to place previously adopted technical amendments to Florida building code in article six of the code of ordinances, and some of the previous amendments will be modified, so some of them are no longer valid. For instance, in two thousand fifteen, the Florida was not requiring one photo, Florida building code did not require one photo of free board, but now it is a requirement, so that amendment is gonna be completely omitted from the new ordinance. So these, um, amendments, I listed a few of them here, so that will be R three twenty-two dash two dash one, R three, three twenty-two dash two dash two. Um, this one is particular for AE zones, we have the, uh, removal of the two ninety-nine limitation of enclosure below DFE from that particular section of the code, and then R three twenty-two dash three dash five, that's, um, pertaining to the V zones, that's the enclosure areas below design flood, and, um, this will, item will be discussed later, that's a consideration to allow breakaway walls. But item three, all we're actually voting for now is just to move all of these amendments, Florida high, uh, Florida, uh, building code amendments into the article six of the code of ordinances, so-
Does anybody have any questions? Keep the one, we have a consensus to move forward? Alright, great, thank you.
Thank you. So, the next slide, um, covers those modifications of enclosures below elevated residential dwellings. We're suggesting to remove the two ninety-nine enclosure limitation from Florida building code section R three twenty-two dash two dash two, enclosed areas below DFE. The benefits of this, um, the clear area below the DFE protect structural integrity and discourage owners from converting area to livable space or storing costly hazardous materials. Additional hundred CRS points for AE or up to hundred and fifty points, uh, for coastal A are available when breakaway walls are not permitted. The limitation of this consideration, the two ninety-nine enclosure below DFE is more appropriate from V and coastal A zones. It does not provide adequate space for the enclosed garage below the DFE. Um, and this policy was not fully enforced in AE zone since its adoption in two thousand sixteen. We're not sure why, but we're, we think, we're, um, pretty sure that it's because, um, it's more appropriate from V and coastal A, and that's where it needed to be placed back in two thousand fifteen under the V standards rather than AE. Um, the next, the following slides, they show some of the homes, residential homes that were constructed after the adoption of the Florida, of the flood ordinance twenty fifteen dash sixteen, in two thousand sixteen. This, um, house on Shore was built in two thousand nineteen, and a permit issued on June nine, eleven, two thousand nineteen. The following house was, um, also issued, the permit for this house was also issued after the twenty sixteen. And three thirty Shore Drive, permit was issued on December fifteen, twenty seventeen. As you can tell, all of these homes, they have either, um, the garage enclosure with the living space above it, which is uh, way above the two ninety-nine enclosure, or, um, the entire first floor enclosed and used as parking, storage, or access. Again, this is way more than two ninety-nine. So the, again, the suggestion was to remove the 299 square foot enclosure limitation from the building, Florida Building Code Section R 322-2-2.
Okay. Questions? Anyone?
Were there variances requested for those houses in Granite?
We don't have a record for it. Again.
I'm sorry, Todd John. The first two are auto.
Are what?
Grant, done through state of D E M. So I don't have an answer for the third one, but 346 and 348 are infamous in my mind. We're not totally sure because we were dancing with the state throughout the process of all of those. And Felicia, could you just quickly give us maybe a Reader's Digest version of why we're recommending that, the 299 removal, kind of in the common sense scenario? You explain it to me, and I don't think we're at this point.
Sure. We're recommending elimination of the 299 requirement because philosophically, all the houses are gonna have what could be garage space underneath, right? We have to build them all up. So a 299 enclosure would only allow you to park one car, maybe none. It's very small. The average garage is about four hundred square feet, just to give some reference. So this is a balance between allowing the property owners maybe to use a breakaway wall system and under, so that you can park underneath your house. Because technically, right now, you, we have a 299 square foot limit, which isn't really enough to do that. So there's a balance between having the most amount of points available and a balance between what our homeowners would maybe, would like to see on their homes in, in these low-lying areas.
We weren't really looking at it from the points perspective. What I was asking her is the common sense perspective because of what we already have. That's why we're making that recommendation. It's kind of silly to keep.
And it's kind of interesting when this got passed. You know, I don't know, and I wanna thank staff for the extra effort for today because I don't know that this kind of educational experience or time was put into it back when they passed that limitation. You know, sometimes when we get overwhelmed with a lot of different, especially when there's a lot of changes going on, it's easy to miss a detail as, you know, being the professional volunteer versus the professional staff. And so I think it's good that it's being pointed out to us because it probably was an error to approve a change that said, you can't, can't have a practical garage. And, you know, I mean, it just, doesn't seem to align with property rights, you know? So do we wanna take these A, B, and C one at a time? No? Okay. All right. Are there any other questions on A?
I just want, we're just removing it. There's not another limitation that we're putting on it, correct?
There is.
There, okay.
So why don't we go through A, B, and C?
We're gonna be requiring the non-conversion agreement. Sorry, Mayor.
Oh, that's right. Okay. I saw that. Okay.
And back in 2015, this was placed under AE. And AE, if you think about like new construction taking place on Washington, they have a garage which is partially under, underneath the footprint of the house. But in FEMA terms, you don't use a garage term. You use the area below the elevated structure used for parking, storage, access. So unless you're sharing just one wall with that main structure, anything underneath is considered to be, again, enclosed area below the residential elevated structures. And that was limited to 299. So these new homes on Washington, they were not able to build your typical home with the garage underneath or even the garage slightly, you know, in the front because it, garage would be more than two hundred and ninety-nine square feet. So it limits where, it might be very much appropriate for V zone and Coastal A as your higher standard, so that it's all open when floods. But in AE zone, if anything, that it should be removed from the AE zone. That's my opinion.
Okay. Since we're gonna take them all at once, let's go on to B.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this will be the modification of enclosures below elevated residential dwellings pertaining to breakaway walls. And we recommend to allow breakaway walls in VE zone and Coastal A. Breakaway walls were prohibited by adoption of the ordinance 2016-15 as a higher standard. I'll just briefly mention what the breakaway wall is. So a breakaway wall is a wall that does not provide structural support and under certain wind and load is intended to collapse without causing damage to the main structure. These walls are required by code, by Florida Building Code in VE and Coastal A zones currently today. So if you have Coastal A on the map, VE zone, you must have them. Coastal A, you must have them, including the flood bends. We, in our current ordinance, do not allow breakaway walls, however. So these are just pictures. So this is your elevated structure, breakaway wall, supposed to collapse. This picture demonstrates how a breakaway wall, when it's not designed properly, because breakaway walls, they have to be engineered, specially engineered. So this breakaway wall, somebody just attached probably some stronger attachment to the main structure and they destroyed it, took part of the wall from that main structure. However, the picture above, you can see that breakaway walls were gone. They removed the debris and everything, the structure, the main structure remain intact. So. You have any questions on the breakaway walls?
Anyone have any questions?
I got one.
Go ahead, Mayor.
It seems as though the intent with those is to help reduce any hydrostatic loading on the structure. So why, one, I guess, did we not, or did we not allow them? Or we don't right now? And then also, why would it increase insurance premiums if it's, at least how I see it, is a beneficial thing? I'm kind of confused.
People tend, once it's enclosed, people tend to store some valuable materials beneath. Or they may be even converting that structure to something other than storage access parking. So FEMA gives extra points for those communities that remove the breakaway walls. And also, this requirement was applied together with the 299 limitation, enclosure limitation because in FEMA terms, breakaway walls are considered to be enclosure. So even though they're supposed to break, they're still enclosure and not permanent. Yes.
So the rates are higher because of the anticipated modification of use of the space.
Historical data proves. That's insurance. Hold on. Go ahead.
I would just tell you that in Pinellas County, I'll bet you, you'll find hundreds of unpermitted bathrooms. Treasure Island would lead my list, but I'm aware of many.
Yeah.
In addition, they had some limitations to the Florida Building Code where, okay, it's a breakaway wall, but I can put a hurricane-rated window, in which case my hurricane-rated window is not gonna actually break. So when you do have flood, then the entire breakaway wall could start floating with that window attached to it, if not properly. So they require engineered certification that the breakaway walls would collapse under the certain wind loads. So they're more of a hazard.
And so I'll share with you really quickly a real-world story. My neighbor around the corner, who's, his property goes next to the Kumar's property, if y'all know where that is. And so he's looking to do some, he owns, got his house, he's got a lot, and then he's got another house that his father lives on on the corner. And he's looking to do some stuff to sell one of, sell the big house, build on the other. And he, you know, he came to me just perplexed and he's like, listen, I can't do a stem wall because he's Coastal A, right? I can't do a stem wall and I can't do a breakaway. I can't, I'm like stuck, you know? Where he, you know, he has enough property where he can move up just enough where he could do something. But he was complaining a little bit about being, I said, well, I think, you know, we're talking about these things and there might be the opportunity to do something with breakaway where you could in fact have a garage. And I think the council probably will agree that limiting it to two hundred and ninety-nine square feet is probably not reasonable, blah, blah, blah. And so for him, it's a great real-world example of where, you know, he wants to, he already owns the property, but he hasn't built on it yet. And so now he's gonna have to face it. And we kind of boxed him with what we passed in 2016 and with some of the changes taking place. You know, and the breakaway wall shouldn't, from a practical standpoint, be a big deal to anybody. And here's the logic, living there, okay? If it floods over there, everything on the first floor is trashed, okay? I mean, it's just, it is what it is. I mean, you know that. I mean. So at least if you have a breakaway wall, 'cause Tommy, my neighbor, he goes, well, you know, all my stuff's gonna be trashed. I said, partner, all your stuff's gonna be trashed if it happens anyhow. But what this does potentially saves your structure. And so it's a smart, yeah, just let it go, you know? I would say when that's, they're gonna be evacuated. I said, you won't be here anyhow. You'll be evacuated. Welcome to the neighborhood. So. All right, let's go on to the last one, Mayor.
Okay. So the last one would be to require a non-conversion agreement. And a non-conversion agreement is a legal document which is filed with deed. The owner agrees not to modify the enclosed area in a way that would make it more susceptible to flood damage or to convert it into livable space. So for a non-conversion agreement, we have three options for which we can receive additional points. If we mention in the non-conversion agreement that the city's gonna inspect it once per year, we can get up to ninety points. Option two, if we grant the right to inspect it anytime, we'll get sixty points. And option three is the agreement does not mention inspections at all. We only get thirty CRS points. This is the item that we would like to, for the council members to consider as well. So which option you would like to consider for the community? Or which options is more practical, I guess?
Okay. All right, good stop. Go ahead.
Question. Who's gonna do the inspections?
So the inspections will be primarily with the planning and development department as a flood plan coordinator, maybe code enforcement. So we haven't decided yet. But if we decide that it's gonna be once a year, then it's gonna be obviously on the log. So someone, if we have two hundred homes that we have to go on an yearly basis and inspect, that puts you two inspections per week. So it's a task. If we just mention, if we can inspect it at any time, then it will be more of a, if you have a complaint or an issue or we notice something, we just have an option to go and inspect.
Which sounds like the most practical one.
I'm sorry. So two of the things. So will you notify the homeowner, give them like a thirty-day notice that you're coming to do an inspection? How would you do that?
That's a good option. So we can definitely, there is a draft version of a non-conversion agreement attached to the staff report at the end. So if you have any comments or suggestions for that non-conversion agreement, we can definitely modify it.
The only reason why I'm asking is, this is a huge topic with short-term rentals that we're having issues with on the beaches and stuff that the Department of, for the short-term rentals, wants to come and do inspections. And they wanted, they're trying to figure that out. So I was just very curious on how we would handle that. So thank you.
Let me also, if I could, I think it'd be beneficial from a management standpoint on these options, get some feedback from our city manager.
Well, first thing I would, after hearing from council, was one of the things comes through my mind is we have to decide how badly we need the points. I personally think that option one is probably the most realistic in terms of our ability to catch somebody that did it illegally. But I don't know that that's something I necessarily wanna specialize in doing because we're complaint-driven largely for code violations. So this would almost have to be done the same way where somebody would have to call us and say, hey, somebody's got a bathroom on their ground floor. Go look at it. So I'm not excited about that because of the general way we do these things. But I don't practically think option three is realistic. And option two is, I think, what we originally intended when we passed the other ordinance. So I'd say, obviously, if we need the points, then we go with option one. I think option one puts the onus on us, but gives us the greatest opportunity to find violators if there're gonna be any. Beyond that, I'm not sure I have a real, do you have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I think option one is, I think option one is ambitious.
And as the city manager has just said, it is our best way to actually, you know, find somebody who has violated the non-conversion agreement. It does, it will cost staff time, right? Because then we'll have to also make appointments with them. We can't. So we've gotta find people when they're home, make an appointment, go in and inspect. And then, you know, option two gives us the right to inspect, as the city manager said, at any time. So we can, if we got a call or complaint, we can be a complaint-driven. You're really talking about a minor set of points compared to two thousand points. We have twenty-one forty-nine points. So, you know, when you're thinking about that, just think about the scale of the difference of the points.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one quick question. What is the consequence, should the homeowner refuse the inspection or fail the inspection? If you know.
Code enforcement board? Or we beat them up?
It would be code enforcement. So they will have to since they filed it with deed. And some of these may come up as people want to sell homes. So if you end up having a bathroom in the enclosed area below BFE, then it will be a code enforcement and a building violation. So at which point, life safety.
If we take that route, you know, the first thought I have is sometimes if you have to make an appointment to have an inspection, whatever they got wrong, we got time to clean it up. If they have an illegal bathroom on the ground floor, there's not gonna be, by the time we get there, but.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So basically, it kind of sounds like we're teetering between option one and two of a difference of thirty points. So based on that thought of the total amount of CRS, I mean, is it, are we at risk of falling to a lower class over thirty points?
We might. Our recertification will be, the last one was in 2018. So we have a couple of years.
The other, the other thing to that, 'cause we had this discussion before the meeting, and that is that there are areas for us to go look for ways.
For more.
For more points. Because what's going to happen with this new flood maps, we unfortunately are going to have a lot more property that is in higher-risk areas. And so there, you know, as it was described or explained to me, there's different areas that you get points from. One of the buckets is what I would call maintenance of, you know, how proactive are we? And there are opportunities for us to go, before our next recertification, to go look for those areas to add points so we can manage that. So just to, I know where you were going with that, yeah. All right. Grabber, do you have?
I was just looking, 'cause in the, in the draft of the ordinance itself, it says by executing the agreement, the owner agrees to periodic inspections. And so option three, it was just to the point of, I don't think we have an option for option three. And just with what the assistant city manager said, option one is ambitious.
Because it requires staff time. And again, if we're largely complaint-driven for code enforcement, which is a fancy way of saying we don't run around looking for cases. Okay, if that was the issue for code enforcement and this was gonna be an element of code enforcement, you really gotta be looking for it because you won't see it readily, even if you drive by. So ambitious in the sense that if we really wanted to police it, it would take a significant effort. And I'll tell you, I mean, just from my experience, it's out there. There's, it's, it's not uncommon right now. So, I mean, I think ambitious in the sense that we'd probably have to put more resources towards enforcing it. And for thirty points at this point, I don't know that I think it's gonna make or break us, but, you know, we might be down the road, to your point, needing the points. And you could always amend it again if you had to.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, and you know, just from my own, I'm advocating for B 'cause of the thirty points. First off, where we're at point-wise, it wouldn't have an impact on us now. No, it's got A, B, or C on our document.
Yeah, I agree with B.
Oh, she, yeah, okay, yeah. I was looking at our document. Yeah, two. B two. To B. In any of that, I think it just makes more sense. And certainly where we're at from a point standpoint, we do have some wiggle room there and.
And time.
And time.
And I forgot to mention, this will be for new development or substantially improved and substantially damaged. And I forgot to mention, this will be for new development or substantially improved and substantially damaged properties, so.
Yeah, and the thought of us, the thought of us, yeah, and the thought of us, frankly, you know, I know that we have some homeowners' associations in Oldsmar. And, you know, people bought their homes knowing that. And like that, then you have a lot of places people don't wanna be in a homeowners' association environment. And, you know, when we start doing annual inspections and stuff like that, we're becoming a homeowners' association, I'm sorry, and that's, you know, if you want that, it's probably what, you'd pick somewhere like that to live. We have, we got all the options here. All right, so we've got, I'm going to assume that it's staff's recommendation that we adopt A, B, and C in our report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna see if we have a consensus. Do we have a consensus to support A, B, and C? And C being with item, whether it's option two on the slide, but it's B in the report. We agree on that?
Yep.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And the next slide kind of like provides a summary of all these different options. So the first option would be to keep the ordinance as is. So we'll be not removing the 299 limitation below the BFE. We'll still continue getting our 100 CRS points for AE and up to 150 coastal A. Alternative two here, we would remove the 299 enclosure limitation from AE only and keeping it to V and coastal A. We believe that this was the intent of the original ordinance in 2016. And then option, alternative three would be to remove the 299 limitation enclosure below the DFE and introduce a non-conversion agreement in all flood zones. Also allow the use of breakaway walls in coastal A and VE.
And I believe that we just came to consensus on alternative three. And we selected B as the...
Granted the right to inspect.
Yeah.
Number two.
Number two or B, right.
Two, two B.
Very good.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're on a roll, you're on a roll, you're batting a thousand.
So the next slide covers coastal A-zone. Prior to these new maps, we did not have coastal A-zone delineated on our farm maps. The new maps establish the coastal A-zone CAS and limit to moderate wave action, which delineates the CAS. Limbo is a wave height between 1.5 and 3 feet during a base flood event. Florida Building Code requires buildings constructed to VE-zone standards, however allowing two exceptions. First exception is to allow backfilled stem wall or dry, the second one is dry floodproofing of non-residential buildings. This graphic shows here this coastal A, this is a limbo. We also have it on our flood maps. And the following graphic just shows the overall special flood hazard area and how it's broken down into different zones. So here you have your VE-zone, where the wave height could be over 3 feet. Then your AE-zone, up to limbo, that's where the waves are 3 to, between 3 and 1 and 1/2 foot. AE, where the waves are less than half a feet. And adjacent zone is the limit of base flood. And waves also referred as a coastal, as the shaded X. And it's usually shown in orange on the flood maps. So we have this area here, from here, AE with a limbo, which is referred to as CAS, coastal A-zone. It's important to note that the only type of foundation available in CAS for construction, and it's defined by Florida Building Code, would be stem wall filled, backfilled, open foundations with columns and piers, open foundations with piles only. This is again just an overview, so this is your coastal A-zone or your AE, where the fill and the continuous stem wall is allowed with flood vents. In your coastal A-zone, you have the backfilled stem wall. So the area below the BFE or below the elevated structure will not be able to, will not be able to use that structure for parking access. It will have to be filled with gravel or dirt. And these two options, there are VE that are also acceptable in coastal A. It is also important to note, as I mentioned earlier, how the building, Florida Building Code defines the lowest, the finished floor elevation or the lowest floor elevation, the lowest horizontal, in the VE-zone, the finished floor elevation is measured to the bottom of the lowest horizontal structure plus 1 foot of freeboard. So this is very important to note here because it's not just the BFE plus 1, it's BFE plus 1, plus whatever your floor framing, plus whatever that measurement of that bottom of the lowest horizontal structure. How it's affecting Oldsmar? Well, in some of our areas in coastal A and VE, well, already at elevation 6 or 7. So then the new DFE or BFE, base flood elevation on the new maps, might be elevation 14 or 15. When you add another foot of freeboard, you're at elevation 16, maybe with your horizontal lower, low horizontal member. So that means that for the backfilled stem wall, you'll have to bring up to 6 or 7 or 8 foot of fill to fill the perimeter of the entire foundation. We just think that it's not practical for Oldsmar community to allow that. And while doing that, we can also get up to 500 CRS points. Remember, Florida Building Code, right now, they're allowing, they're pushing the V, you're required to use the VE standards in coastal A. However, they're allowing you two provisions. Those two provisions would be this backfilled stem wall and dry floodproofing of non-residential. But this is not exactly practical for us, so. In order for us to get all of those points, we have to amend the Florida Building Code, so issue a technical amendment to the Florida Building Code and prohibit the stem, the backfilled stem wall construction in coastal A.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody?
And we have maps here which show all of the coastal A and V lots. We have approximately 378 residential lots that are located within coastal A. Again, this requirement will be only for new construction or for substantially improved and substantially damaged structures.
Yeah, and keep in mind, stem wall is not going to be practical because of the elevation level.
Yeah, you'd have houses that are...
And, you know, and this isn't, my property, part of it falls in VE, right? Where it just so happens to be where I wanted to build a deck, right? And then right on the, where my house structure starts, it goes to AE. And so the significance of that is I wanted to put a stem wall deck in back, right? Now, my house is built up like 6 feet or something, I don't know, but it's built up. So I was willing to do that, but it was sketchy whether or not, you know, the economics made sense to do it that way. And lo and behold, I'm gonna end up with a piling system, right? But when you start talking about some of these homes where they're building up and they're going up, gonna be going up 13, 14 feet, and then you would not have to have a stem wall, then you would not have a garage under it. You would have no usable space under it. So, I mean, it's, this to me is a very practical vote.
We'd be building little mountains all around.
Yeah, I mean, it just, and you, you know, I mean, it's a very practical vote to accept staff's recommendation.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Is your house allowed on fill?
I have a stem wall that I did, but built 2003, somewhere around there. But I still had to bring a lot of fill.
Yeah.
And can I tell you something, I kinda regret it.
Really?
I do. I do, I would've rather gone up higher. I, you know, kept, I'll tell you the Bruce, Bruce Haddock story one day, but... 'Cause I didn't wanna do it at all, I just wanted to remodel what was there.
Yeah.
And I ran into this when I learned about the 50% rule. And Bruce Haddock told me, man, I live right around the corner from me, he was the city manager at the time, and he's, you're gonna build right there and you're not gonna build up, you will regret it. So I, you know, I got mad and left, but he... And I thought about it, and I didn't, I wasn't willing to play any kind of games with permitting and stuff. So I said to the contractor one day, we're there, and they're telling me I could do this, I could do that, to get around it. And I'm like, you know what, just tear it down, tear the whole thing down. We're gonna do it right, I want what I want. I remember driving away thinking to myself, I don't have the money to do that, what I just... That's not what I got approved for. And then fast forward, I don't know, six months later, and we're drying in, and along come the three hurricanes. And I'm out there, and waves are breaking against the back of the house. I saw Bruce Haddock, I don't know, a week later, and I said, you were right, I was wrong. So it makes sense, good for, you know, long-term. You think one thing, just because you're in the moment and you realize later, there's a real good reason why your, why your city was trying to prevent you from doing something that would just wipe you out later, so. Anyhow, I assume we have a consensus on this? All right. Right ahead.
Tatianna, I just wanted to thank you for this presentation. Not only was this memo and staff report very helpful, but the additional photographs and the sort of demonstrative photographs are very helpful to me. I don't have a lot of experience in this area, so seeing the examples is very helpful. Like, this is a breakaway wall, how it's supposed to work. This is a breakaway wall that broke away part of the house, bad. I appreciate the real-life examples and the pictures from houses around Oldsmar so I can put it in perspective. So thank you for including that in this additional presentation.
Yeah, it was an excellent job.
Thank you.
Very well done, and, you know, maybe, maybe we could get that up as one of the supporting documents for the meeting. Because if somebody wants more information, it's a great way for them to go educate themselves on that's what this all means. And so anyhow, good job.
So just last point, this will go to the planning board from council's call. Then it'll come back to you for formal consideration.
Very good, very good, the chairman entertained a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, I have a second, and a discussion, doesn't require a vote.
Well done, Tom.
Thank you, thank you for your time, thank you.
Wonderful job.
You're natural at it.
So you got the cool...
What are these things?
Car visor, car shade.
If it's really windy out, that'd be a little...
Saturday, it looks like Saturday.
I have a question for you on one of those maps.
Pinellas County, before we try flooding, really helpful.